Good evening. This is a regular city commission meeting for the city of Largo for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. I'd like to call this meeting in order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. We're going to start this evening's meeting with an invocation given by Father John Roberts of Cavalry Episcopal Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Roberts is with us virtually tonight.
It's a pleasure to be with all of you this evening. I will read two prayers out of the Book of Common Prayer, which I think are very appropriate for this occasion. One is for our cities and the other one is for local government. So the Lord be with you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth, especially Largo. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders such as those who are here before us this evening. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with different talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. And Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this city the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. We pray specifically for Woody and Michael and Samantha, Eric, Jamie, Donna, John, and those others who are here to support this assembly. Give them the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Roberts. Before we get started, I would like to ask authorization from the commission for Commissioner Finger has requested that she participate remotely today through Zoom, so I need authorization from the commission in order for that to happen.
So moved.
Motion second. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is approval of the agenda. Actually, before we move to that, I will ask if there's any citizens' comment this evening.
Yes, we do. May Lee Kipers is here.
Good evening, May Lee Kipers. I live, I play, and I work in Largo. I'm here today to advocate on behalf of one of Largo's most precious assets, namely trees. Not just any trees, but more specifically our older trees. As science is showing us over and over again, global warming is changing our climate with already dark consequences. Now, global warming is basically carbon dioxide and other pollutants that are getting trapped in the atmosphere. Trees have an amazing ability, the ability of absorbing carbon dioxide from the air, that would be CO2. And remarkably, trees can perform that task far better than any technology that has been yet designed by humans. And it does so actually in one of the cheapest way. For 31 years now, the city of Largo has gained the honor, the national honor of Tree City, USA, and I believe it is because Largo knows firsthand the positive impact the urban forests can have on its community. Unfortunately, the existence of our trees and their countless benefits are at risk. During the Florida legislative session last year, many protection on private property trees were stripped away. This has opened the door for developers to easily dispose of some of our healthy grand trees that may take decades and in some situations, centuries to replace. A recent German study has actually found that the older a tree is, the better it absorbs the carbon. As a matter of fact, the research suggests that over 70% of all of the carbon that is stored in a tree is accumulated in the last half of their lives. So I urge the city to address tree protection and retention, especially of our grand trees. I urge you to strengthen our tree ordinances, including those that regulate the removal of trees during development. And I urge you to send our elected officials a message that trees and tree preservation are important to Largo and its citizen. Please don't let heritage oaks and century oaks just become catchy names for apartment complexes or housing developments. Please make every effort to preserve our existing tree, because doing so, you will ensure that generation to come enjoy a better quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have an email that came through from Amanda and Jerry Herrig. And this email says, "As a lifelong resident of Seminole, that's used the Largo Municipal Golf Course for regular golf and foot golf, I am deeply troubled by the redevelopment discussions surrounding the golf course. I enjoy having the open space along Walsingham Road as it breaks up the monotony of the underutilized parking lots of these shopping centers. I also feel that golf course is an asset to the community. Additionally, I believe that too much of our land is already dedicated to high-density developments such as apartments, condos, and ginormous shopping centers. My father and brother golf every Sunday and frequent the Largo Municipal Golf Course and always boast about how nice the greens are compared to other courses in the country. While I understand that the city may not see the golf course as a highly profitable venture, it does increase the quality of life for those that live around and near it. Thank you for your time and consideration."
Thank you, and thank you for writing us concerning the golf course. Next, is that all the citizens' comment?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Next is approval of tonight's agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 2nd, 2021.
Move approval?
Second.
Any corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Could I hear the consent docket, please?
Item three, approval of the deed of easement by in between CSX Transportation and the city of Largo for the railroad crossing at Rosary Road. Item four, appointment of Maria Cado as a member of the planning board. Item five, approval of an agreement to provide additional design criteria compliance services for the WWRF Biological Treatment Improvements Project with McKimmon Creed in the amount of $227,260 in accordance with RFQ number 14-Q-484. Item six, approval of an agreement to provide additional resident project representative services for the WWRF Biological Treatment Improvements Project with McKimmon Creed in the amount of $496,145 in accordance with RFQ number 19-Q-653. Item seven, approval of an agreement to provide additional state revolving loan support services for the WWRF Biological Treatment Improvements Project with Angie Brewer-LC in the amount of $293,386.17 in accordance with RFP number 19-P-662. Item eight, award of scope and fee to Mead &amp; Hunt Inc. for the design of Clearwater Largo Roads Best Management Practices Project, RFQ number 19-Q-666, in the amount of $84,828. Item nine, award of bid number 21-B-705 Miscellaneous Sanitary Sewer Lift Station Rehabilitation Annual Purchase Agreement to four recommended bidders.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. I would like to take a minute to thank Maria Cado for volunteering to serve on the planning board. I don't think, I know she's not here today, but she's probably watching from home, so thank you. I did speak with her last week, and she was very excited about this new role, so thank you, Maria. Next up is item number 10.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This agenda item requests city commission approval of an increase to RFQ number 19-Q-652 Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Rosary Road Community Streets Project contract price for additional construction funds. The city commission awarded the contract for reconstruction of Rosary Road from the Pinellas Trail to Missouri Avenue, also known as Phase 1, to Nelson Construction in August of 2019. In January 2020, the city commission authorized the Phase 1 Design Consultant to design for reconstruction an additional 1,100 feet of Rosary Road at the eastern project limits from Missouri Avenue to the Walmart truck entrance. Construction funding for this segment originally scheduled for 2024 as part of the Rosary Road Phase 2 project was moved to 2021 to address issues related to truck turning movements at the southeast corner of Missouri Avenue and Rosary Road, also to take out a median, a planted median that was, is difficult for staff to maintain and to improve lighting. Design and construction is being coordinated with a potable water main replacement by Pinellas County Utilities. This request is to increase the contract price of Rosary Road Phase 1 Contractor Nelson Construction in the amount of $992,429.80 for construction of the extended project limits. Staff is available for question.
Thank you. Do we have any cards on this?
We do not.
Commissioner Smith.
Out of curiosity, Barry, when is this going to start? It says it's going to be completion time in October 2021. When are we looking at starting this? Or when are they looking at starting?
We'd like to start in March.
March.
At this point, it's looking like late March, but in March.
Okay. And curiosity, that would shut down that segment. Am I, I'm correct, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the traffic flow, what are we, how are you all, how are they looking at moving it around? Because I'm curious, if people are trying to get into the Walmart or trying to get through back onto Rosary, are they going to be cutting through the parking lot to get through? Have we looked at that at all?
The, we have not received a maintenance of traffic plan from the construction contractor yet, but we have a meeting tentatively scheduled for this Thursday with Walmart to discuss that traffic patterns.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberts.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Smith read my notes over here, but so when we do this project, if it's supposed to be starting in March, and it probably won't be an issue, but earlier, just a couple of minutes ago, we approved on the consent agenda the easement for the railroad tracks on the other end of Rosary, and you know, I'm assuming that in the near future, hopefully in the near future, we're going to be completing that project across the railroad tracks. It would be nice if we're not doing both, if we're not closing down two sections of Rosary at the same time. I know that when it comes to CSX, we're kind of at the will of CSX as to when that project will happen, but if we can, you know, not have those going on at the same time, it would be easy, or it would be a little bit, I think alleviates some issues throughout the city here. And secondly, when it comes to the, I'm assuming there's going to be some type of medians in there, you know, I know we're going to push the median back from the intersection, but I'm assuming there's still going to be some type of median in there to keep traffic, you know, on their, on their right side of the road and, you know, with Walmart being there. I don't know if anybody else, but there's a, it's kind of, it's kind of tough to turn into Walmart at points because of the palm trees that are in the middle of the median there, so maybe we can have a look at that. But I definitely want to continue to have some sort of landscaping in the medians other than grass. I know if we look at the other side of Rosary that we just completed, those were, those medians that are close to Missouri there are just grass, and I think we can do a better job than that. I'm not a huge, you know, we don't need to go all out with the hedges and all of that, but some type of Florida-friendly landscaping would be, would be beneficial, I think, in that area, easy to maintain and low maintenance costs. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
I think the vice mayor read my notes. Barry, I was going to save this to the end, but I'm bringing it up now because of the railroad crossing and the rest of Rosary Road project. I travel that route frequently, and I know I brought this up before. Would it be possible to take another look at the north side of Rosary Road, right west of the railroad tracks, to see if there's something we can do from an engineering perspective to stop people from dumping tree limbs, furniture? I mean, we spent a lot of money out there beautifying that area and making it safe, and for some reason, I'm not sure if it's a resident or a contractor or who's doing it, but frequently, there's a big pile of debris right there. I don't know if we need to catch somebody doing it and punish them or educate the property owner there that that's not a dump. I understand people put stuff out for bulk pickup, but this is like a recurring problem, so I just bring that to you at this point because you're sitting there. Thank you.
Thank you. In the memo, it says removing median that is hard to maintain, I believe. What median, what part of the median are you talking about there? That's going to be, I know that some of it, as the vice mayor said, some of it's going to be pulled back from Missouri, but what's the part that's hard to maintain that's going to go away because of that?
Okay. So there are currently two median islands there now, and you know, those two median islands will remain. The western median island, the one that's got that, the long, you know, skinny planted part, that's the part that will be removed. We still will have vegetation in that median island where it expands. And Commissioner Robinson, it will be low height vegetation there. We will not be able to keep the majule palm that's in that island. So that's the part of the planted median that would be removed. It's there on the western end of that western median.
This is where it narrows down to the turn lane, basically.
That is correct.
So will there, there won't be a raised median? So I know that it's going to be pulled back from the intersection, but will there be part of a raised median that's just like cement or something, or?
That is correct. Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
I was just wondering, so when you are coming out of Walmart from the side onto Rosary and you're making a left, there's part of that median that actually comes out, which I've watched cars that want to get in the turn lane. Is that part of the median that's going to be removed? Because I've watched people turn left out of there at night, especially because there's no reflector or anything on that, and they go right up over that to get into the turn lane. Is that, are they actually going to just make that one, like, like one lane of median? Or are they going to leave that little hook in there still? Do you know?
A great question. We are going to leave that bulbed-out part of the western island. It's going to be reconfigured just a little bit, so cars will have a little easier time getting around it. But we certainly are not going to, you know, go away with that bulved-out median and just have a, you know, a two-foot-wide strip all the way down to Missouri. We will not have that.
Okay. Can we have like some reflectors on that, though? Because you can't see that at night.
Well, I think they're improving the lighting, too, as part of the project.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But you're right. It's hard to see through there.
The trucks turning east on Rosary, when this, when it first was rebuilt, when, I think when Walmart was put in there, the trucks used that sidewalk and now the gravel pathway. Will removing the center median allow them more room, or are we going to do some work on that sidewalk as well?
We are going to do work on that sidewalk. Combination of things, the median is going to be pulled back about 40 feet or so, so that will give the trucks left wheels, you know, they'll swing out farther and...
All the way to the left turning car.
Correct, yes. We're going to kind of increase the radius of the curb there to give those right wheels more of an opportunity to stay, you know, actually in the, in the turning lane as opposed to get up on the curb.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor.
Did you say you were going to decrease the radius of the turn, of the curb on the, at the intersection there?
Increase.
Increase. So I know the county, or maybe it was FDOT, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, did some ADA modifications out there to all the intersections along Missouri, and I think, you know, that's what, that's, since that has happened is when, you know, you're seeing the trucks turn over, the, or their trailer wheels go over the corner there. So, and that's why we have the gravel in there and all the other issues that are happening. So I know by cutting that median back, it'll give them a larger turning radius. So are we going to, because of the side, because of those trucks going over that intersection all the time, or that curb there, the sidewalk and everything else is cracked, and that's going to be part of this project as well? Or is that FDOT or somebody else's part?
That is part of this project.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve an increase to the contract price of RFQ number 19-Q-652 Construction Manager at Risk Services for the Rosary Road Community Streets Project to the David Nelson Construction Company for an additional construction service to extend the project limits in the amount of $992,429.80.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is ordinance number 2021-39.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The item before you this evening is the first reading of ordinance 2021-39 authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at Largo Lake Villas to Carl and Alicia Zabauer. The lot in question is a water lot adjacent to the Zabauers' property, which is located at 210 Trolley Street. In November 2020, the Zabauers informed the city of their desire to purchase the water lot. They've owned their property since 1991, and they were under the impression that this was part of their property, and they've actually been maintaining it since they purchased their property. The Zabauers did a survey in October of 2020, which reflected that the city did own this parcel in question. The Zabauers would like to continue to maintain this property as they've done so over the last 29 years. So for reference, please see the map before you. You can see Second Street, Avenue Northeast to the South, Trolley Street to the West. The blue arrow to the left shows the location of the Zabauers' property at 210 Trolley Street. The orange arrow to the right shows the property that they would like to purchase from the city. And you will also see that the city will retain the property to the south of the lot. I consulted with the Public Works Department, and they have indicated that this parcel is not required to maintain the lake as there are multiple access points available. Staff is recommending a purchase price of $500, which would include the required advertising and recording fees with the county. I'm available for questions.
Ordinance number 2021-39, an ordinance of the city of Largo, Florida authorizing the conveyance of the real property described as Largo Lake Villas, Unit 1, Water Lot 1, Plat Book 53, Page 7, to Carl Zabauer and Alicia Zabauer, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do you have any cards on this?
We do not.
Commissioner Smith.
Just out of curiosity, I don't think so from looking at that. The city doesn't own any other parcels north of their, their parcel, correct?
Correct. We do not. We own, if, you may notice, this lake is the lake that City Hall sits on, and we own the property to the east of the city-owned property and this triangle that they are looking to purchase. So that's really where Public Works has access to the lake and then also our property just south of the property that they're looking to purchase.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance number 2021-39 on first reading and schedule a second reading in public hearing on March 16th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item number 12, a staff report.
Good evening, honorable city commissioners. The purpose of this staff report is to seek direction from the city commission on proceeding with a proposed amendment to the Comprehensive Development Code to provide greater flexibility for redevelopment and development within the city's activity centers and multimodal corridors. The city's activity centers currently encourage mixed-use development, higher densities of units per acre to support more housing opportunities and choices, and higher intensities to provide opportunities for a mix of retail and office. These uses, all combined with the proximity to multimodal transportation and walkability, all contribute to a live-work environment. However, as developers and property owners assemble parcels to create viable redevelopment projects with enough density and intensity, staff has found that the Comprehensive Development Code is missing a process and tool that is allowed under the Forward Pinellas Countywide rules, that is, density and intensity averaging. This is where density and intensity can be shifted amongst parcels. Under the city's current Comprehensive Development Code, a redevelopment opportunity that may have various contiguous lots with different land uses are not able to shift their density across parcels, even if the property is under one ownership. One such example is in the Largo Mall Activity Center. This site, 2075 Seminole, is a redevelopment site. The northern parcel is outside of the Activity Center and has a land use of residential office general. This use has a density of 15 units per acre, and due to the size of this property at just under one acre, a total of 14 units can be built here. On the southern parcels, which are commercial general, you can build 24 units an acre, and the properties total nearly four acres, which calculates to 91 units. If a developer wanted to shift all 105 units from this acre to the southern units on commercial general, they could not under the current code. The current code does not allow averaging across the parcels, even if there is remaining density on one parcel, and the current code does not allow the density to be shifted to the contiguous parcel. Each parcel and its respective land use designation is considered an island, even under one development order. This is also the case where a redevelopment opportunity site is bisected by right-of-way or a road. The density and intensity are not permitted to be shifted... The density and intensity are not permitted to be shifted across the lots to create a better design, or even if the properties are, again, the same land use. Density and intensity cannot be aggregated and shifted across the parcels, even if the height allowances and floor-area ratios support the aggregation. Staff has identified a provision in the countywide rules that allows jurisdictions to average the density and intensity within the multimodal corridors and activity centers, and to split density and intensity if needed, to create flexibility for redevelopment and improved site plan design. The benefit of this provision is that it allows cities to establish a procedure for the transfer of density or intensity from one land, from one parcel to another as part of a development permit, provided that the density and intensity averaging is approved by the city in site plan review. The density-intensity averaging is formalized in an agreement where there are two owners, and the agreement, along with a certificate of title for each parcel, is prepared by an attorney, signed and sealed surveys, and the statement of development rights in terms of, of density or intensity is recorded against the property as a covenant or deed restriction. This process is distinctive from the city's existing transfer of development rights process. Transfers of development rights have finality and are irreversible, even if the density for the land use is increased later on under the countywide rules. This means that there's a cessation of development rights, and once all of the development rights are transferred, the property that is sending their density or intensity shall no longer have development rights. Currently, under the, for example, the redevelopment plan for the West Bay Drive District under a transfer of development rights, only 25% of density can be sent from an existing property to another property. At this time, staff is recommending the amendment for the multimodal corridors and activity centers, since this is the areas in the city that allow for mixed use and stackable floor-area ratio, also known as FAR. Within Pinellas County, both the City of Dunedin and Pinellas County each have provisions in their development codes to allow for density and intensity averaging. The City of Dunedin, for example, has established an administrative process in which their zoning administrator maintains the records in the form of density-intensity averaging certificates. Dunedin allows portions of density and intensity to be averaged and includes any development rights available to, but previously unused, by existing development property that is being added or redeveloped using those density and intensity averaging provisions. So, if, if the City Commission desires to begin the amendment process to allow density and intensity averaging and the provision under the countywide rules, staff will prepare a draft Comprehensive Development Code amendment for legal review. And if approved, the anticipated timeline includes a presentation to the Community Development Advisory Board and, and the Joint Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory Board meeting in February, presentation for approval by the Planning Board in April, and a presentation for the City Commission for consideration for first reading in April, and a second reading and final adoption in May. And the proposed chapter at this point in time, where the amendment would be, be in Chapter Eight of the Comprehensive Development Code. And I did contact the City of Dunedin to find out if they had a recent example of a project there that was utilizing that, that certificate of density and intensity averaging, and they shared that the Dunedin Gateway Project, which is across from their hospital on Main and Milwaukee, for that project in their development agreement, the city facilitated the transfer of 18 units for a mixed-use development project that is in their redevelopment district. So, at this point in time, I'm, staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you. Do we have, this is a staff report, so-
Yes.
Any questions? Commissioner Smith.
The Dunedin one, when was that, that they took place?
Yes, there, they had the second reading for their development agreement in, in December.
Okay, so it's not been done yet, built, or?
It has not been constructed yet.
Okay. So, my next question, out of curiosity, is what is the unintended consequence of a possibility of this? Is there any unintended consequences of this?
Well, at, at this point in time, if there were two property owners that came to an agreement and shared their density or intensity, you know, depending on how long that period for that covenant restriction at that point in time, you know, they, they would not be able to use the, the maximum development rights. However, because this is distinct from the transfer of development rights, it, it is reversible. So, there's not that finality, like, as in the transfer of development rights.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
Excellent presentation, and it, it sounds like a very good idea. I just want to make sure I understand that if you have two parcels with different densities and intensities, then, of course, averaging would lower the overall intensity, but would also, it would be able to increase the number, the intensity and density across both parcels. You wouldn't be able, the maximum density on parcel A would go down because you're averaging across two parcels.
Yes, so, one example, to give an example, if there were, for example, two properties in the West Bay Drive redevelopment district, and there was a property that wanted to only build a, a mixed-use office and retail tower, and there was another property that only wanted to build, for example, apartments, the two properties could average or, or, or document the transfer of intensity from one property to the other, which is the mixed-use and retail component, or, and the, and the other property could send all of their density to, to, between the two. So, it could be shared, and then that would be recorded. So, essentially, the way that the countywide plan rules looks at it, as long as the maximum intensity and density is not exceeded for that, that district, that it, it is allowable.
And, of course, if you're combining two properties for a single project, that the same would apply. And then as intensity, and down the road, if intensity or density was increased, then those properties would be able to take advantage of that because they're not actually sacrificing their, their-
That is correct.
Okay. One, one other question, too. So, if approved, if, if the commission decides, yeah, we're, you know, this is a good idea, let's go forward it, you're going to take this to the Community Development Advisory Board in February, which is this month?
Correct.
Right? And, and then come back to, and then others, and then to the Planning Board in April and be back in April for us. So, it makes me think that you've got this all ready to go.
We are using the Dunedin code as the model.
Okay.
That is what is proposed.
All right.
As long as the, the legal approves, the legal-
So, it's, of course, it's going to go through legal review, but you already have language all ready to, to go.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
And because this is already allowed in the Pinellas County Plan, it's, it won't require to go to the county, is that correct?
The city attorney has advised that we should allow them to review and, and just make, ensure that there's no conflicts, or that the language is, aligns with what the countywide plan rules allow, but it should not require any-
Cool. So, again, this is just the activity centers, correct?
Correct. And multimodal corridors.
So, so the density relates to residential density?
Correct.
So, if, like, in their medical arts district, if there's a parcel next to the eye center that's vacant now, that they wanted to transfer their, and I don't, I don't know, maybe this is a plan, I really don't know, but I know there's, there's some space over there, that if they want to build higher-density residential, and they have the floor-area ratio space to do so, they could, they could borrow density, or average density from, from the eye center. And as Commissioner Gerard pointed out, if, if in 10 years we realize that the density that's allowed in that district is probably lower than it should be, and we increase it, they're kind of held harmless, unlike a transfer of density, which it's, they're stuck there forever. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. This is a good thing. Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. Well, anxious to see it come back.
Thank you.
Mr. Zimmert, do you have anything this evening?
I don't have anything.
Nice. Vice Mayor Robinson.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Holt.
Just real quick, so the IRS has finally started accepting returns on February 12th, just a couple of weeks late. One thing I want to tell people, though, is make sure that you know what your stimulus payments were, because it's very important. You're not being taxed on it, but if you did not receive it, you will receive that in your tax refund. And please be kind to your tax preparers, because we're still trying to get over last year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right. Commissioner Smith.
Just to let people know, this Friday is Movies in the Park, Central Park, the 19th at 6 o'clock. The movie's going to be The Princess Bride. So, maybe Ted Cruz will watch that one. And then the other one is on-
Inconceivable.
And, and also on Saturday, Central Park is going to be hosting a, a car, a car show from 9 to 1 at Central Park. So, hopefully, everybody turns out that's on Friday, or Saturday, the 20th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Both of those are outside, and plenty of space to spread out, and wear masks if you're not able to spread out, and I'd like to see Andre Giant on the big screen. I like Princess Bride, it's a good movie.
Prepare to die.
Commissioner Finger.
I have, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gerard.
Two very quick things. I came up to City Hall earlier today and saw the, the parking lot over at the former Everest University was loaded with cars pulling in for the vaccination center that was set up there. So, I understand there were 12 lanes going, and I want to thank our first responders for helping to staff that, that, and they just do a tremendous job, and, and thank you for that. And along the same lines, there will be a vaccination center set up this Saturday at Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church for the residents of the Ridgecrest area, 65 and over. Understand we have enough units for 500 vaccinations. I encourage people from that area, please, please, go take advantage of it, you know, and, and we can move along and, and get these vaccinations out. I think it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, they're, they're doing big numbers over there, over at the new center. So, as that ramps up, it'll be very good and take a lot of pressure off. I did have something, but I'm trying to, oh, I know what it was. When, when we went to the, I think it was a virtual, maybe it wasn't a virtual groundbreaking. It was the, the Heart of Largo in down, in the, at the Largo Central Park. There was some discussion about putting a little sign that, that encouraged people to take pictures there, and then hashtag Heart of Largo. I was wondering if we could get that done. I think that, that'd be kind of a neat thing, and it'd be something easy to track. Just a real small, something that has Instagram and Facebook with hashtag Heart of Largo. I think that would be really, really cool to have out there. There's, I saw people, what made, made me think about it is, I saw people there on my way to the meeting today, actually, it was several hours before, on the way to City Hall today, taking picture, and then there was another group waiting to take a picture next. So, so let's, let's get them to Instagram or something. Mr. Schuber.
I have nothing this evening.
All right. Do we have any action items?
Yes, I have one from Commissioner Carroll, who had asked about staff taking a look at the north side of Rosary Road where the debris has been dumped to see if there is a way to prevent this. And then one from Mayor Brown, asking about getting a sign with the hashtag Heart of Largo encouraging people to take photos. And that was in Largo Central Park, you said?
Yeah, the Heart of Largo. All right. If there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.